Welcome, welcome to the October 27th workshop. It is 2:00 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. Please rise, Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge of the flag?
Sure.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thank you, thank you for everybody coming. I'm gonna open up the public open forum. I think we have somebody that would like to speak. Would you like to come up? I need you to just give us your name and your address and you get five minutes. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thanks for having me, thanks for being here. Brittany Tarver, 337 Bay Arbor Boulevard, Osmar, Florida, 34677. So I was really excited to see the afternoon meeting today, so, because usually in the evenings I'm at the ball field. I'm a mother of two young boys and I coach both of their teams at Osmar Little League. I'm here for the item listed on the agenda, process for donation request, the recipient being Osmar Little League. My hopes today is to convince you of the importance of Little League and why it should be top priority for the city. I played in District 12 in a neighboring city from ages 6 to 16. And as much as I wanted my boys to play on the fields I grew up on, Osmar is their home and their town, and I wanted them to represent as such. Little League creates memories to last a lifetime. Kids who have never touched a ball play next to tenured players, but at the end of the season, it's the new kids making game-winning plays. So, what would you be paying for if you invested in Osmar Little League, you might ask? You'd be paying for kids to never quit on themselves or their team to learn discipline, to work together and be a good teammate. You'd learn, or kids to pay, you'd pay for kids to learn to deal with disappointment, to respect themselves and others, to be proud of small achievements and to work towards long-term goals. You'd pay so a child would be on a field instead of front of a screen, and you'd pay to give them an opportunity to bless the lives of others. And I think that's a great investment. If Osmar Little League could be considered for donations or additional funding, we could work with the city on improving our complex. Anything we can keep in-house, we should. The men and women who maintain our fields are not to blame, but the support for them to be successful is what we all need. Safe playable fields is a minimum requirement. I do thank you for fixing that ongoing problem, but these kids deserve more. Our T-ball field has potentially hazardous water shooting from the ground behind the fence. I'd say our cages are in poor condition, but that doesn't paint the picture properly as one of them is missing the roof completely. I've received some complaints from new parents that navigation in our complex is tough and needs improvements, so we could care for that with some new signage. The league pays an astronomical amount for participants' rec cards along with lights by the hour, custodial services, fields lined for games, and this just names a few, leaving little to no funding for things like new equipment, which we desperately need. These are just a few things that we can address with your help. If we currently have funds coming our way that I'm not aware of, let me know. Let me know how much is left, where it will be going, and if we could have more, please, because we're currently playing catch-up. In reference to this that I got to see, I think this is, at face value, really a good idea as far as like the process in which, because I'm for transparency, and if there's anything that I need to be doing in order to make those funds happen, please let me know. And I look forward to hearing from you. Also, please forgive me if I can't stay for the entirety of this meeting. It is Forest Lakes trunk-or-treat this evening, and I have to go pick up my All-Stars soon, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else would like to speak for the open forum? Alright, with that, I'm gonna close the open forum and we are gonna get started. Item number one on the agenda is Town Hall and Open Format Meetings with City Council. And Councilmember Knapp brought that to a council meeting a couple months ago, I believe, and I'm gonna let you have the floor.
Very good. I made a little presentation, so I'm actually gonna go grab the clicker if y'all don't mind. Okay. So as the mayor said, we brought this up kind of right shortly after or in line, around the time that we were setting our newest council priorities. So I just got a little bit of information here to sort of prompt our discussion. There we go, already started that. Come on back. There we go. So, just to kind of start thinking about, how well are we engaging our community? Back in May, as I just mentioned, we adopted our council priorities, one of which was expanding community engagement. So so far, if we're starting to think about what so far have we done historically or are we trying to do now to engage our citizens, the city manager and staff are doing an excellent job of doing things that they can control, right? They're publishing, they'll experience Osmar Magazine. They're doing, I think, a pretty good job of putting out what's going on through social media and recently been holding the public open houses, for example, for the library property as directed by us. However, I think one of the big deficiencies is from, I think what we could probably all agree upon is that there's been the feedback from the community that they feel like they may not be being heard or that they understand what's going on, especially with projects of pretty major significance. And what we hear a lot over and over is, we should have a town hall or some other sort of open format meeting. So, let's just talk about typical, what could happen at a town hall, I'm not saying that it will, but oftentimes what may happen as a pitfall when holding open town hall meetings. There can be an unbalanced power dynamic. For example, if we're sitting up here and you have people down there, already we're at a height advantage to people sitting on the floor, so it creates already a little bit of tension, right? Versus if we were all at the same level. There can be a lack of diverse representation from the community. As Ms. Tarver just said, she probably can't come to evening meetings. So if we were to hold an evening town hall meeting, you're limited to who's not working during those hours, right? Versus a daytime-type event or on the weekends. There can be unproductive disagreements and structure that encourages a lack of civility. So if you don't have a really good format and control of the meeting, it could spiral out of control. Oftentimes, you may get some feedback that turns out to not be really useful, potentially because you didn't have the right representation at your meeting, right? So a lot of it starts to stem back of, can you get the right people in the room? And another final bullet kind of stemming from that same thing. You may get narrow views because the folks that show up are the ones maybe most impassioned, but maybe isn't the full spectrum of what's out there in terms of views. So, before we decide to have any sort of new town halls or open formats, we should ask ourselves these questions. What is the purpose of this meeting? Our time, staff's time, council time, and our citizens' time is valuable, so we shouldn't be holding meetings just for the sake of having meetings, right? We want them to be productive, we wanna have results that come out of them, and we wanna have a specific purpose behind it. So, here's some of the questions we should think about whenever we go to schedule meetings that aren't required by our charter, such as our council meeting. What do we want to achieve in this meeting? Who will come versus who wants to come and who can come? Something to keep in mind. What do the people currently think about that issue before you even have the meeting? Is it worthwhile to have that meeting? How will we get them to come? Are we gonna be able to advertise as best as possible and give folks enough notice so that they can get here? And then what's their capacity to participate? Are they able to get here, as I mentioned before? Is that time convenient for them? Is the room big enough? Can they see and hear? You know, if the room's too big and there's not proper sound, they may not be able to participate. Can they speak English? You know, I don't know if that's a big problem that we may deal with here in Osmar, but it's something to consider overall. So here's a little bit, I gave you some reference material that I'm working off of here. But there is a organization out there called the International Association for Public Participation, or IAP2, and they have developed a spectrum for public participation. If you look at this, and we'll kind of, I'll break down each of these columns as we go a little bit further along. But as you basically move from left to right on the spectrum, you go from types of meetings or types of interaction with the public where there's high trust to low trust on the far right. And again, going from left to right, there's usually low emotion or low controversy about an issue versus as you go to the right and needing to have more and more public engagement or participation, there's usually high emotion or high controversy. As an example, the best and most efficient public meetings are gonna occur when there's high trust and a low emotion or controversy environment. So we're gonna kind of dig into each of these, and you can refer to that chart just as an example. But these are some techniques at each level of participation that we would be considering having our people be involved in. So when you're just doing inform, that's basically, we're dispersing out information, but we're not asking of anything back from the people out there. So, there are some things that we already do that kind of fits under that category, right? The city manager's newsletter, our magazine, social media postings, and if there's handouts at any specific meeting or open town hall meetings, or, excuse me, open house meetings that already exist. When you go to the next level up, you've got consult, where as example, things that you can do, and if you refer to your chart here, it's like, we're asking for feedback, right? But there's not really any active interaction. But there can be to an extent, because you can go out and interview people that are key stakeholders in the community. You can do digital surveys, which we have done. There are some things out there. For example, we just had the comp plan one recently, right? Is it still active? It's still active, okay. And open houses, where it's really a more, I don't know what the right word is, but basically, not as interactive, where people kind of can move around the room, there's different stations, but they are at least able to interact with subject matter experts, but they're still not getting to us, right? At least of how we've built things thus far. The next level up, involvement. At that point, we're trying to work us directly with the community. That's where it starts to become a little bit more everybody working together. You could have community panels where, for higher stakes or long-term projects, where there's things that are more impactful and people are gonna care more about, we wanna get direct impact from stakeholders. So you could think, if we were gonna be doing something pretty substantial to where there was some sort of community panel that would be formed that they could meet, or we could cross with them and meet together. And the fourth one, fourth level, collaborate. This is where that project really starts to get its high stakes, high emotion, high controversy, right? And I think we're all familiar with some of those types of scenarios. It could also, when you have to get to this level of collaborating people, it could be because of eroding trust in the decision-making body. And at this point, it goes beyond just getting input, right? It's them having a say at the table, maybe not necessarily having the decision-making capacity, but really talking and working together. It'd be work sessions where it could be us working with community, people out in the community directly and coming to an agreement on a path forward on any given issue, right? This isn't any, this isn't issue-specific at this point. So, example for that, threw a couple out there because obviously they're pertinent to what's going on right now in our city, downtown redevelopment projects or updates to our comprehensive plan. And a couple techniques at this level is having a workshop, as I just mentioned, or design charrette, which we had with, what is it, the resiliency program? So, obviously that was focused on one thing, but you could have a very similar workshop-type thing set up for a different subject. And the final level, empower the people. All prior levels, the stakeholders could provide some level of input, but had no decision-making authority. At this point, when you're empowering them, it, basically, it's, you think of it as probably a referendum, right? They have the final say in what takes place on a particular issue. Involvement at this level is rarely done, typically in extreme cases. So think like if we were gonna put a landfill here in Osmar, probably wanna have the people have a say in that, right? That's a pretty extreme example. Alright, so, where do we go from here? And this is where we'll kind of lead into having everybody have a chance to share some thoughts. Option one, we can do nothing. We can keep having our meetings as-is, we can have our public open houses or items in the CRA, and maybe that's good enough. Option two, other extreme, we could place all decision-making authority on all issues within the community with the people. Or option three, we can do a better job at involving the community on our important issues to build trust in decisions made by us. And then I think just our final slide here is just a little bit of credits, the content of where I pulled some of this from that I included with your packet. You might recognize that first name on there, the Ref Tellis. They did our water rate study, but they had an excellent piece to kind of break down the whole point of town halls in their traditional format versus trying to do something a little bit more proactive. So with that, Mayor, I'll kind of turn it back over to you and see what your thoughts are, and we can talk from there.
Councilmember, great job, great presentation. Thank you for sharing all this information with us, greatly appreciate it. I'm gonna start out with Councilmember Graver. Do you wanna have any comments? You wanna start and we'll go with you and we'll come down this way?
Sure. I think when we, when we made it a council priority, we started increasing the amount of public input. Sort of, you know, taking all this information and having a hybrid. I mean, the options for referendums are always there, always have been. But in terms of, do we even have it as a, we're specifically going to talk about this at this time sort of format, which is what I understood the ask to be. Be interesting to hear what everybody else has to say, but in terms of just increasing the volume, I think we've already started to do that. I'm not sure specifically are we implementing a process or we're going to say, hey, we're going to have a specific meeting on a specific issue whenever it's warranted, but then who's the arbiter of whether it's warranted or not? Or is it twice a year, we have, you know, a meeting on the important issues that have occurred within the last six months and will impact the next six months? That sort of thing. I'm not sure if you all had similar ideas, but that's kind of where my thought process would go.
Can you go back one slide for me? Yeah, so, Councilmember Graver, let's talk about the options. What are your ideas here? Do-nothing, number two, or number three? What are your...
It was, it was three, where it's, it's, but how do we, how do we format it? I thought that's what we were going to be discussing today. It's, do we do specific, specific items that we want to have discussions about? Or is it like an annual or biannual? These are the important issues that we're facing. We're gonna invite members of the community to join us and ask questions about, you know, this list of things. I just, that's where, starting first, I don't have the feedback as to what everybody else was thinking, but that's how I was coming in.
It's good. Vice Mayor.
First of all, this was amazing. I mean, awesome job, thank you for this.
It took a few minutes of internet digging.
Copy, paste, print. You know, when I, when I look at this, there's a couple thoughts going through my head. The first one is, really, we're doing two and three. Because I think the reality is placing the decision-making authority on all issues of the community, that's the election, is it not? Right? So, when I look at option two, we're not asking them to come to make decisions. They made the decision on who they wanted to lead the city. Now we just have to involve them. So obviously, I'm definitively for option three. But, thinking about this, we were trying to offer more community involvement. I think the recent downtown density, we can go through all of that stuff and talk about it. There's a lot of emotions, a lot of things that ran high, a lot of good information, bad information, misinformation, all the stuff that was happening during that timeframe. And I think the ultimate goal, I think that I think we may all be trying to accomplish here is, how do we prevent emotions getting that high in the future? Right? By holding these town halls to give more accessibility to the residents. They don't have an opportunity to ask questions, answers here, giving them opportunities. So, really going back to what Councilman Graver was saying is, I think we're all gonna be on option three at the end of the day. I think we're gonna need to figure out what's that process gonna look like. Make sense? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think we're all for option three, essentially. And I appreciate the presentation, Andrew, very much. This scale that you have here, inform, consult, involve, collaborate. I think we are doing a better job of informing, and I do feel like there is room for consulting, involving, and collaborating more. In your presentation, you tied some of these types of activities, you know, where you gave examples of consult, such as the influencer interview or digital survey or open house, involve. You gave the example of a community panel, then collaborate. You gave the example of a workshop or a charrette. Or, for example, what we did, you know, at the Hampton Inn with the community visioning workshop, where, you know, we're using a professional to kind of get the information and, you know, boil it down, boil it down until we have that sort of feeling like everybody got to participate. I think that it's interesting that in each of those sort of types, consult, involve, collaborate, you tied, and it seems like we've been tying those types of events to specific issues, regardless of timeframe when they come up. So, I'm not sure, for me, that it's prudent to sort of, as you mentioned, have a meeting to have a meeting, you know, once or twice a year. I think it's an as-needed, you know, let's do this when needed, you know? So, for example, you know, the mayor brought up the vision statement, you know, for the CRA. Okay, let's do this, we need to have something. How can we make it interactive? How can we invite people? How can we, you know, help people feel like they had an opportunity to be heard? And we had the benefit of a professional for that particular event. And we ended up with so much great feedback. I mean, seeing people's handwritten notes and the information that was then distilled by the professional, I think that was fantastic. So, you mentioned in your slides the comp plan, for example. So, you know, when we are at the next step of the comp plan and the changes, which, I haven't checked the website recently, so forgive me, I can't remember if we're looking at January... December, okay, December. So, for me, that's a, that's a great example of when, okay, bam, we have an opportunity here. So every time we have an event or something important that's coming up, that's the opportunity, right, to consult, involve, or collaborate. And I think, as you mentioned, where it's a high emotion, low trust, I think that can help us gauge what might be the proper format. If it needs to be a little bit more on the inform side because it's not a super, you know, controversial issue. So, for example, we had the open houses, which would be under the consult column for the new FEMA flood maps. We had it at the library, I think it was at Tico Hall.
It's here?
Here, that's right. And then we had, you know, I think Daniel Simpson was here, the city manager was here. I know Planning and Redevelopment was here, to kind of help people walk around, see the flood maps, understand. So it was that sort of, get the information, but that's a sort of low emotion issue. You know, FEMA was telling us, this is gonna be the flood map. So it's a little more on the inform side. So, you know, the consult might, might have been sufficient for that. Whereas the higher emotion, the, you know, workshop or charrette style might be more appropriate, such as the visioning workshop. So, I am definitely for, you know, finding, based on the issue that we're about to confront, I think it's important to be on the front end of whatever issue we're about to confront, of gauging where in this spectrum, consult, involve, or collaborate. I mean, of course, first inform, but then consult, involve, and collaborate where it's necessary. So, I know this isn't exactly the answer that everybody was, you know, kind of looking for, but essentially, of course, the lawyer says, it depends. You know, I think, I think it really does depend on what we're about to deal with. And the higher emotion and the lower trust, like Andrew mentioned, I think the more proactive on the front end, more opportunities of various times, different locations, larger venues, I think all of those things can kind of be taken into account. It also might be a good idea to look at what other cities are doing for some of their, you know, high emotion, low trust sort of conversations. I know it's a little easier to hear in the news about events happening in larger cities, you know, St. Pete, the ballpark, okay, what are they gonna do? You know, that's a really highly-charged event. But, okay, so what are they doing to inform people? What kind of timelines are they putting on it? Are they informing people, you know, a month in advance, two months in advance? How many sort of workshops are they holding? Or is it just a community panel? Or who are influencers in our community? You know, let's establish some groundwork. Let's get them involved so that when the time comes, we're not then looking for who we wanna speak to. Or, you know, we're not then looking for who could be on a community panel or something like that. I'm gonna pivot. So, you mentioned town hall meetings and open houses, and I understand that there's a bit of a difference between something that's staff-led and something that's more of a Q&amp;A format with the council. The second type, I'm not entirely sure how to navigate because anytime we're all together, it has to be noticed, you know? It has to be published to the public, there has to be, you know, an agenda, what we're gonna talk about. And I know that these types of events, if we tie them to specific issues, that can be a little easier to communicate. Okay, we're gonna have this type of community panel on the comp plan on this date. It's at this location, here's what to do, here's how to participate. But if it's like a Q&amp;A session with the council, I'm not sure how we do that. Because how can we find a way to let people know in advance what's going to be discussed? Because you don't wanna have a situation where we're all up here having a discussion and suddenly it veers into a different topic. Not that we would ever take a vote, but that seems unfair that we might end up talking about something that somebody would have liked to participate in but didn't have the opportunity. And I think there might be, you know, some pitfalls to be discussed there. I'm not sure how to address that. I'm open to thoughts, and again, perhaps looking at other cities for examples, not just local cities, you know, cities around the state for how they, or if they, do something along those lines. So, those are my sort of initial thoughts.
Thank you. Andrew, I'm gonna go next, okay?
Absolutely. I've had it.
Alright. Couple things. My question to number three is like, how, you know, how can we improve? That's what I wrote down here. Recently, city staff has been sending out these postcards for our public events. I mean, I'm riding my bike down the street and I'll have a neighbor stop me and say, hey, I got a postcard in the mail. You know, I mean, everybody in the city, our communication has expanded so dramatically. I mean, we're communicating with all types of neighbors now. I mean, these people didn't even know what was going on in our city, and now they're getting postcards. So I don't think that, I think it's a starting point. I think they're starting to wake up, I think, I should say. Because we only had, what, 30 or 40 people at the last workshop that the city put on, but at least we have attendance, and I think it's gonna keep growing. So I think our awareness and what we're doing with these public events is really improving from our city to our citizens. So our communication is definitely going. And one thing that Katie said is, I do agree with you as far as the meetings, it's as needed. You know, as we have these conversations of a town hall meeting or workshop or a planning session for the city, we need to communicate it during council meetings and we have to be together, collaborate, and make a decision of how we should proceed together as a council. I think that's what we have to do. And then Katie, your point, again, when you pivoted, you know, the town hall meetings, you're right. How do we all go? Sunshine Law. You know, we're going to the mayor's luncheon where we go and we're concerned about Sunshine Law right there, you know? So it's a, it's a, it's a... After just going to ethics class last week Wednesday, and that refresher class, after being in there for four hours, you're like, thank God they do this every year. You know, because it really makes you really think twice of what you're doing in the public, you know, the public area. And, so as far as our communication with our citizens, I think that's really improved. And I'm asking my question myself, how can we improve that? How can we, how can we get more citizens to come? How can we do that? We're already doing postcards, we're already building this citizen trust. I really feel that we've done an excellent job in that. So now, Andrew, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I guess the really reason why we're here is for the town hall meeting. And do you have any suggestions on how you feel, your ideas of how we could collaborate and come together in a town hall meeting? If, let's say, you wanted to call a town hall meeting for a particular item, whatever it was, ABC, and you wanted to have this town hall meeting, what would you, how would you suggest we tackle that?
Sure, I can comment on that. But just first, thank you for everybody on the feedback. I certainly agree that I think as far as the left side of this spectrum, as I found it, we've definitely been doing a better job in those areas versus it's probably more recent where, you know, just think about it this way as far as milestones go. From election time in March to when we adopted priorities in May to when we first talked about... about trying to schedule this meeting, right, up until today. If you look at those kind of four data points and how much, how many things have happened along the lines that start to fit in and align with the spectrum, even before any of us knew about it, right? You know, we were saying, well, we're going to commit to this. You know, there was a whole institute out there about trying to drive public participation. So, specifically as it relates to the town halls or just public participation in general, I agree, I don't, you know, I suffer this, you know, at the office oftentimes, you know, meetings for the sake of meetings or meetings to decide when you're going to have another meeting, right?
Yeah.
I don't want to do it just for the sake of doing it. So, being specific or issued base, I think it would be probably appropriate that if one of us has the inkling or desire to try to hold one, that would be of all of our participation, is to probably add that to an agenda and talk about it, we vote on it, and try to set the date from there so that obviously if city staff's going to be the one organizer or helping host that, they have the ability to get ready and get it duly noticed and all those sorts of things. Or if we were to choose to have some sort of third-party moderator, you know, we can't just do that on a dime, right? So, I think having, doing our best to have a little foresight of when we may want to do something along those lines. The other interesting thing I want to point out, which, please forgive me that I kind of missed it, I didn't have it in the presentation, but on this spectrum here, and this is probably just where it's going to require some follow-up, on my behalf, I'd be certainly happy to do this and report back more, that final sentence there at the top says, "The spectrum is used internationally, and it is found in, quote, 'public participation plans around the world.'" So, maybe that's something that we need to look at, and that's really what we're talking about, right? Is trying to develop a public participation plan for Oldsmar. We kind of have it ad hoc where there's some things just driven if it's specifically CRA versus, you know, if it's something about recreation. We don't have anything that's saying, oh, well, when it's a big recreation project, we want to have an open house. There's nothing requiring us to do that right now, so we could just pass a budget item and go forward with some big recreation project, right? And who knows what that may be? That's just an example, right? So, I think probably some follow-up and due diligence about what is a public participation plan, and what does that look like? Like you said, what do other cities do, right? They have examples. Do they have public participation plans, or are they also just kind of winging it? I think that's probably where our opportunity to capitalize on this lies is maybe having better framework or rules or structure around when it's a certain issue. Is it a dollar amount threshold for a project that requires us to do some, creep up the level of the spectrum here as far as holding some type of public participation? So, to kind of address the Q and A portion, I think my concerns about that were a little taken care of when we were having the meeting and discussion about council rules and procedures, where if we're, if it's at the mayor's desire to allow us to have some type of QA during open forum, I think that's a good starting point for that. Because traditionally, it'd be like, oh, no, it's no questions, and get your five minutes and go. If we can find a way to weave it in there, then it's, you know what's on the agenda that night, you know what we're going to be talking about when it comes to our time to address items, and you're free to talk about anything else and ask about anything. And if somebody can provide an answer, or if we say, you know, city staff can look into it and provide an answer at a later time, that probably does a decent job. I'm not saying that's the best in the end result, you know? We don't want to say we've made it and then just stop trying to improve, right? So, if everybody agrees there, I think maybe that kind of helps open the door for Q and A-type interaction because at least two times a month, people know where to find us, right? But again, it goes back to can people come, right? So, I think that's still the gap that needs to be filled in terms of how do we allow ourselves to interact with folks in a public fashion beyond the normal times? So, that's maybe where we can kind of, as a takeaway or action item, to say, hey, what's that idea look like? Because I don't know the right answer short of calling with some frequency if that if it is versus a random time for a town hall that's on a Saturday. Something outside of the first and third Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Because we know there's people limited by that, right?
I actually want to start with that. I actually like the idea of having the public open forum questions. I don't have a problem with that. Because then if myself or city staff can't answer the question, we can get back to the resident, and I think we should open that up, and I think that's a better format going forward for us. I mean, this is my personal opinion, okay? Just being on council. I think it's, it wouldn't hurt if a resident came to the podium and asked us a question and said, hey, I got, you know, I got a problem. Perfect example, it's probably going to happen Tuesday night, when the citizen comes up and asks about driving her golf, daughter driving her golf cart when she's 14 years old. You know, we can discuss it in front of her and make a decision if we want to take it to the next step, or we want to stop it.
Yeah, I think, if you don't mind, just being mindful still of like, we want to be efficient, right? We don't want to open the door and then that drags out for two-plus hours, right?
Yes, right.
So, I think still, the current rules might keep it reined in to the right extent, but maybe there's just some of that tweaking there that if it's spelled out more explicitly in our rules of procedures about how to handle that scenario within open forum. It's like, they get their five, up to five minutes to speak, right? But then maybe we get up to five minutes in total to provide some sort of response, you know? I don't know. I mean, that's obviously throwing more work on our city clerk, but...
The only thing, I'm just kind of thinking through this, if somebody brings up a question, let's say, and there's a little bit of discussion that involves, you know, more than just one of us, it's more than just a yes/no answer, or this event's happening this day, or we'll call you, I would just be careful of having a discussion that would be better suited to be placed on a future agenda so that other people who are affected by the same issue that that resident is bringing to us can also have the opportunity to...
And we can discuss that and make that decision.
Yeah, so, just, you know, using that discretion to make sure that it doesn't become a debate that should be on an agenda for other people to participate, and for the city to do, you know, background research on whatever the issue is that's being brought forward.
Sure. I just want to add to what Katie's saying. I agree with that completely. In my mind, I was thinking, we go through the open forum, they ask the questions. At the end, we kind of have an open forum discussion. Hey, let's put this on the, maybe a pre-adding agenda instead of at the very end, or add it at the very end, we're adding it to the next agenda or a future agenda. It at least gives a citizen, like, some closure that night that we're going to discuss this, but we can't do it tonight because of laws that dictate how we can operate.
Right.
I like it.
That would be interesting.
Anything you want to add?
I'm just soaking it all in, yeah. Running through all these same ideas leading up to this, but yeah.
All right, so now, oh, go ahead, sure.
Just one more thing. I just want to say, you know, as far as, you know, upcoming things, I think we should all kind of look out the next three, four, you know, five months and see, like, okay, is there something coming up? Because we have some, you know, advance notice of things that are coming up. Like, we already have a save the date, January 31st, for the next community visioning workshop. So, this is going to be over at the Hampton, and again, you know, so this is in January, and we're not even finished with October yet. So, that's great. We're already, I mean, this is just the inform piece, right? We're letting you know that it's going to be happening, but we have tons of advance notice. That's fantastic. We're getting better at that as a city, providing, you know, enough notice that people can plan for it. You know, even flyers, handouts, and not just putting it on the website and not just putting it on Facebook. But I think we could all look ahead and see, you know, okay, is there something that might be appropriate for additional citizen involvement? And then I say we bring it to council discussion at a meeting, or bring it to the city manager and say, you know, I think this needs to be, you know, falls into the consult, involve, or collaborate, or one of the two, or all of them, you know, whatever the situation might be, so that we can all be thinking more proactively.
So, one last comment from me. Harbor Palms, one, I went to that, where they, the city instructed all those neighbors to come to the Sheffield Park. They had two, they had three. I went to all the town hall meetings for the theater district when they were deciding all the neighbors. I went to all those, Gull Air, I went to all that. So, I think our communication is good. I really feel that we're way improved that a lot, that communication. So, as far as moving forward, I think we should just do it as-needed basis. Is that a... Do we maybe agree on that? If, like Katie just mentioned, if something comes up next couple of months, if we need to have some kind of a meeting, we'll bring it up?
Yeah. I think as-needed, but being really proactive about it, so that we're not like, oh, this vote's coming up on a future agenda because I see it on the tentative agenda. We should have probably had a public meeting about it, you know what I mean? Like, it's got to be a little bit further in advance so that we can prepare and do that inform part, so it's not super last minute.
And having the forethought to have it, instead of saying during council comments or something, it's having the forethought to say, hey, we're going to put this on the agenda, I think a meeting's worthwhile here. And as K, Councilmember Gannon was saying, being able to look into the future calendars and just say, okay, these things are going to pop up, let's make sure we get it on the agenda now. So, the five of us have the opportunity to speak about it, instead of just a sort of a passing comment where it's like, oh, it's going to be on the next agenda, it's two more weeks that it could have been ramped up. You see what I mean? Just making sure, just to add to your point that you had made.
Do we agree on that? I agree.
Yeah, like, I could pick a couple of things. Like, I know next summer, right before the summer, we're going to have the budget presentation again, like...
Yep, that's a good one.
Let's think about some of those annual events that we do and make an effort. I mean, there's no reason that we can't start planning these things a little bit more.
I like it.
I like the ideas of all that, and my promise to the rest of you all is, I'm going to dig into the public participation plans aspect a little bit more, and maybe city manager might be able to assist me with that. And can't make a promise that I could give you an update on November 1st, but maybe by the 15th.
That would be pretty quick.
That sounds good.
There you go.
Maybe we'll get that on the 15th agenda.
All right. Felicia, do you have anything you would like to add or comment on?
No.
Okay.
I don't. I did want to, well, sorry, since you asked. You know, we have...
I have to ask. It's my job.
We certainly have been moving along the spectrum, right? So, and I just wanted to remind you of a couple of other things. We had the focus group on the branding, and so we've been working with Creative Pinellas to come back, and we'll be going back to the focus group. But also, this is the first time, I think this is actually, and the branding's more of a collaboration, right? And the same thing with the public art survey. So, you guys remember, we actually just went out and asked the public, what kind of public art do you want? I don't know of any other communities that's actually done that.
Oh, and don't forget the leisure services survey, too.
Yes.
Right, so the public art, where the responses are coming on tomorrow, the three top responses. We also have a committee, right? So, that's, we've collaborated with a public art committee. We asked the public what kind of public art piece they wanted, that the committee is going to, we're going back out to the public for another survey to see if which pieces or which, there's three finalists that the committee picked, back to the public to ask them a couple pointed questions about how it fits the scope. And then the committee's going to meet in November and select the piece of public art. So, that is really full-on...
Empowerment.
Empowerment.
Yeah, final decision.
So, just, you know, we talked about the comp plan. That was, we've got three public workshops, so that's a collaboration. We talked about the GAI, that's full-on collaborate, empower with downtown. We talked about inform with Harbor Palm, St. Pete Drive, and also your advisory boards, right?
The services before we do some kind of playground expenditure or something like that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of remind you guys of just some of the efforts that I just wrote down, brainstorming as you were talking. I'm sure there's more that are not on my list.
I'm glad you added those in.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Remind us. Yes, of course. All right, so I think we're good there. Any last discussion? All right?
Great talk.
All right. Andrew, thank you for bringing that to the table, and great job on the collateral and everything that you did. Item number two on the agenda is process for donation requests from external organization, and Vice Mayor Jared Buckman, you brought that up, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, obviously, being new to council and discovering new and new things, and looking at things from a light of where's the accountability, right? That's really what this is about. And so, when we went through the budget and saw this, I'm like, well, where's this money going? Where's it going? Now, before we get started on this, I think we can all agree, not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but all of these organizations we donate to are great organizations. I'm not discounting any of that. And I don't think we're going to discount any of that. I think we need to be responsible and ensure that the resources that are being provided by those dollars that we're giving to these charitable organizations, that a majority? All? Some? What is that number? And how do we build that transparency for our citizens who are spending this money to these organizations? So, when I first brought this up, I went looking, found the resolution out of the city of Miami Beach that they had on North Miami Beach, excuse me. They went through it, and I'm like, this is exactly what we were kind of looking for, right? How do we set up that process? What does that process look like? And what are the downfalls, pitfalls that we need to be aware of? Because we don't want to erode our trust in those organizations, but at the same time, we have to be responsible to our citizens. So, going through this, it was interesting reading through this and looking at their policy. I looked at the form itself, I've had conversations with Felicia about this. I think just from a high level, we're just trying to understand, what do we want to put into place as a system of checks and balances to make sure that the accountability is there?
So, before you, before we go any further, I just asked Ann to do this little spreadsheet for us today, and thank you, Ann, for getting this done so quickly.
John, talk to me.
Oh, really? Okay, well, John, thank you. Because I called her this morning, and she's like, I wish you had called me sooner. So, thank you so much for getting it done so quickly. And what I asked Ann, I just want to make sure everyone understands, because ever since I've been on council since 2015, it seemed like it would go up every year, and it looks like here, it didn't actually go up. I don't have the 15, 16, or 17, 18, but we do have 18, 19, 19, 20. And you can see after 2021, 22, 21, 22, it went up, and then it went up again. So, I just wanted to have, so the council had a little bit of an eye view of what was being donated to the nonprofits. All right, so does anybody else want to jump in on any comments, what Vice Mayor had just said? Councilmember Gannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think what we did last year, kind of requesting a formal letter and not just kind of doing what we did the year before, was good. I think that was important. We needed to kind of make that step. But I think the resolution that Vice Mayor provided via our city clerk from North Miami Beach, Florida, and their form specifically, it's kind of halfway through the packet where it's, you know, a pretty, I mean, I don't think it's asking too much.
Me neither.
I think it's a good form. And the reason I like having a form as opposed to requesting a letter is that it allows us a little bit more to kind of compare apples to apples when considering each request. So, for example, you know, you get a letter, like we did last year, from one organization, and they talk about what they do, but they don't necessarily say what they're going to use it for. Or another letter, they tell you what they're going to use it for, but they don't explain really why they need it, or how much they need it, or, you know, what their annual budget is. And I think this is a very, you know, benign list of questions. Brief description of your agency, type of service, what's it for? I love number five, we can modify that, of course. Describe the purpose of the request, the services to be provided, and how it relates to the city of Oldsmar. That would be really nice to have the agency requesting the funds answering that, instead of us kind of answering it on their behalf because we know them to be a good organization, you know what I mean? Like, it would be nice to have that.
Or putting them on the spot at the lecture.
Or putting them on the spot. I also like some of the questions, like, how many people in the city do you serve? Like, for example, if it's, you know, thinking like an Oldsmar Hares versus a Mattie Williams, you know, how many residents do you serve? How many are property owners? I like the budget request. As we all know, if these are nonprofit organizations, they're submitting, you know, Form 990s and disclosing their financials on an annual basis anyway, so I don't think it's too much to ask. Most of them have comprehensive websites with financial sections, you know, where that information's readily available. But I think, you know, putting it side-by-side, amount requested next to their salaries and operating expenses, like, that's a nice kind of comparison. And again, being able to compare this form with the form submitted by another organization helps us kind of evaluate on a percentage basis, like... helps us kind of evaluate on a percentage basis, like how much is this donation from? Because that's kind of what it is, you know, how much is this donation from us affecting really their bottom line on a percentage basis? Um, and then the little form, which is the last page, um, is for requests for funds less than a hundred dollars. I don't think we've ever had a request for funds that's less than a hundred dollars. But it might be smart to just adopt something similar just so that we do have it.
I agree.
So we don't have to kind of come back and be like, well, this isn't the form that you're supposed to use because your request is less than a hundred dollars, so just send in a letter. No, I kind of love to see this, this format as well. So I think that was really cool and thank you for digging up that. And Jared, thank you for bringing it to everyone's attention and um, putting it on um, the agenda and then, and then for workshop. Because I think this would be good, you know, similar to how we adopted the, the piggyback requests. You know, when we're doing those funding things for, you know, governmental expenditures. You know, now we know exactly who's requesting it, where it's going, we're bound to this contract. It's just a more formal procedure. It increases what you mentioned, Vice Mayor, that transparency and accountability. Because, you know, if the following year, somebody's asking for more money, we can look at last year's thing and say, well, what happened to all that, you know? That kind of thing. So I think it would be really great if we could adopt um, a form similar to this. I'm not sure where that would come from. Maybe Department of Administrative Services, maybe they could advise us and maybe Tom could advise us what might be appropriate for our city. Not all the questions might be appropriate, but I love how it, you know, comes across.
All right, Councilmember Knapp, you have any comments?
Just, just one really because I, I think Councilmember Gannon covered most of it. I mean, I love the idea of having the form, just some better accountability or trackability of, of what's going on with folks that are requesting funds from our budget. But on that note, as far as budget goes, because I didn't really see it in here and, and maybe it's not appropriate to be in this resolution as far as the process of how you receive requests and, and determine if they're approved or not. But, you know, as, as the mayor pointed out, you know, the, the funds have kind of grown over time, but not only the total amount, um, to some extent, it's also because more organizations have been asking for us. So I think that's something else to keep in mind and that's probably more of a budget focused discussion of, you know, of course, we would love to be charitable to everybody if we could, right? But we also have a city to uh run. And with that being said, it's like, I'm not suggesting that, you know, there's a hard cap, whether it's a dollar amount or a percentage amount of the budget, but it's probably something we, we probably need to just be keeping in the back of our minds of. And we don't want, suddenly want to have one hundred organizations that we're doling out funds to.
Right.
The form might be, you know, some people didn't even submit a letter.
I know.
You know, and so if you're not willing.
That will help. It will help.
Right, if you're not willing to fill out a form and give us some information about your organization, that kind of tells me that, you know, maybe you're not as invested into returning this in kind to our city.
Yes.
Anything else, Councilmember Knapp?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Graver.
Thank you. Um, it was, when I, these are on previous agendas. I was getting confused. So I just want to make sure this, it's essentially the same process, but more involved by filling out this application, which I'm completely for. The special or discretionary emergency requests. In the way this ordinance reads, that requires sponsorship from a city council member. And so I'm, I'm, it may be the way that our resolution is drafted when it comes to that, don't get me wrong. But if it's special emergency, they would still fill out the same form, would go through the process in City Hall. But then the requester would have to be notified, hey, that you have to be sponsored by a council member in order to do it. It's section number five, funding awards. This, this appropriation may include a discretionary fund for late special or emergency requests to be approved by council. Discretionary funds can be used for charitable donations sponsored by a city council member. And so that's that one wrinkle and I don't know if that's, it's something we need to take out. It like, it may be a city attorney question when drafting it, but I just wanted to bring that up because I know this year we had a, a late request, right? And so would that be a special request, I'm guessing, because we were adding to the, the donation that we had already given? And so, of course, that wasn't sponsored either, but it's occurred in the past. So we just, I just want to make sure that we know that if we adopt this language, if that's the city attorney's recommendation, that sponsorship's gonna need to be there. And so it's just one of those things where it's just, you know, as Councilmember Gannon said earlier, nitpicky lawyer stuff, right? It's just like, well, what do the words actually say? And so I know that had been brought up and I think in the initial agenda memos, it was said and I thought it would, every request would need to be sponsored by a city council member, but that's not what this says. It's just a discretionary emergency ones. Just wanted to raise that issue. Other than that, no, the form, if you want money, I want as much information as possible. And so it's, that, I like the idea of this for sure.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
You want something? Go ahead, Council.
He just brought something to the forefront of my mind, Councilmember Graver. The, I was more focused on the form and the process as opposed to the exact language of the resolution because there is a lot in this resolution that does not apply to our city in any way.
Right, for sure, yeah. That's why I just, you have that one passage, forgive me for interrupting you.
Yeah.
Good.
If there was a suggested resolution to implement a form, I would definitely want something that's very unique to us, our policies, spending policies and stuff like that. So I, I was in no way endorsing the actual resolution that's attached to the front.
Yeah, mine was more of a comment on the previous agenda. I just want, I know we, we pushed this to the, the work session, but it was, you know, what, what are the rules actually saying? It's like the form's one thing, but if we're gonna implement a new resolution, then we gotta make sure we know what this one says. And again, city attorney would likely draft it and, and bring it to us and then we'd have a, able, ability to opine on that. But again, it was my confusion because I thought, wait, everybody, every single person who has to apply for or request money has to be sponsored by one of us. I mean, that's really like, how many of the, like, we have, have relationships with. I mean, we're only five people. That's, that's all I meant. And so I understand the special request one, but just wanted to make sure I brought that point up.
All right. Vice Mayor, I wanted to say, great job on finding this, the, the actual resolution and the forms. I just want to say one thing before I let you go again. I think that, that we should approve both of these forms. Like we said, maybe have city staff go over it, maybe make some minor changes. But I totally agree, like Katie said, no one's ever requested a hundred dollars, but if they do, here's the form, fill it out. And anything over, uh, and another thing Councilmember Gannon said, a lot of people didn't even send in letters last year and we gave them money. This is now requires them to fill out these forms. I totally agree with this. I think this was a great concept that you brought to the table, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much. I love this. The other thing, uh, Councilmember Graver, that you brought up, the resolution, I think that city staff and our city attorney should make changes, like Councilmember Gannon just said, that is to, towards our city, what we recommend. And I think we should move forward with this uh in changing this resolution for our city. Vice Mayor, it's your turn now.
Thank you. Um, I have one thing I want to add that I missed in the beginning. And it goes to a discussion of the process. So we got the form, right? But I also felt like there's a need that you're asking for this money. Come show us, come tell us, come present to us, show us what's going on, right? Do we want to require a presentation of some sort at the council meeting as well?
We do that for empower, right? Isn't that part of their agreement? And not saying we would go so far as agreements, but.
Yeah, it's kind of a weird thing because certain organizations that are five oh one C three, we have a contract with and they're required to report back to us, but you do raise a very interesting point. It felt really great to see the requesters who came last year to the um, preliminary budget presentation, but it was a little disappointing to see that others not. Um, not that, you know, the CEO needs to come, but a representative from the organization would be really nice.
Like Mattie Williams, they showed up.
Yeah, and they all, I'm, Mattie, they always do, they always do. That's a really.
The three sixty each showed up too.
Yeah, they showed up to a meeting. I don't know that they showed up to the actual budget. Because there's the budget workshop and then there were the two public hearings on the budget. It would be nice, um, I would prefer that, um, not that we're, you know, if, if we're just looking for consensus, I would prefer that someone um, represent an organization at either the budget work session or the um, one of the public hearings.
Right.
That, I think that's a great, really great point.
Sorry.
You want, you want to go?
I, I, I think we can actually leave that kind of open, right? And say, you know, hey, we turned in our forms to the city manager last night. We want to come this week or this week. So it's not so restrictive and put on two dates on them to come and present. I don't want to feel like we're tying all their hands. Come to any meeting, present at any meeting. We'll just let us know, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll give you however time you need.
Or put it on the form. It is recommended that you attend.
Yeah.
A council member meeting.
I guess I'm a little more forceful. I would love to have them come to any meeting, but if you're asking us for money, I think you should come to the budget meeting, one of the budget meetings.
There you go.
I do. Well, I, I don't know that it, and that's just me. That's, you know, everybody else might have their own opinion, but at the, you know, at the bottom of the form, I like what Mayor just said. It is recommended that.
Well, I mean, if we make it a part of the resolution, then that's, that's the rule. So the form would say, as a, as a reminder, you're required to attend meeting X in order to be considered for the award of funds.
Yeah, so I don't know if Mayor, if you want to look for consensus on that part of it, but I think you raised an excellent point.
I do, but I want to make one more comment that Vice Mayor brought up. The special requests, like the end, like, and here we made that special request, they have to fill out the form too.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, I totally agree. They gotta fill it out.
Uh, which they wouldn't mind if it's special or emergency, right? Give me the form as fast as possible.
I'm more excited about this than I thought.
Getting excited about paperwork, huh?
Well, I know, I know. I'm not excited about paperwork. I'm just excited that we finally getting a process. Just so you guys know, it used to drive me crazy when, when I would sit over there and we would constantly give money away and it would go up and up and up every year. I'd be like, oh my God, what are we doing?
Well, and just a nod to our lovely team over at Administrative Services. I'm sure if they are able, they could put this in a digital format, that it wouldn't be actually more paperwork, but it could be electronically submitted. I'm sure Amy Ratliff would have a field day with that. Just, just thoughts, just thoughts.
All right, before we have a consensus, city manager, Felicia, would you want to add anything to any of this?
Um, uh, no, well, I'll work with um, the city attorney and bring back something for a pretty quick agenda, as soon as we can get it on the agenda for you guys to consider.
All right, we have a consensus. We agree with that. City staff will move forward and city attorney move forward? Yes, all right.
Hope to see it on an agenda.
All right, anything else for the record?
I would be shot tonight if I don't mention the anniversary one last time to my wife. Who I know will be watching at home.
Well, there you go. Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
All right, there you go. Anybody else for the record? No, that's it. All right.